No.
No.
Eighteen forty-seven.
Eighteen minutes.
Eighteen minutes.
Eighteen minutes.
Where are we at? Are we going to keep approving things with them or are they, can we handle ourselves?
At least the development agreement there.
We're not even having enough bad infrastructure yet before we keep coming up with all this stuff.
I don't think so. I think they'll put it in as they go.
I just get nervous that everything's approved and the infrastructure is not totally there and all of a sudden we're getting really worried.
I'm the first to answer.
But I just haven't been around long enough to know how things work.
You can ask that question or tell their, ask it to Jeremy, I guess. It's the development agreement, I understand.
I, I get the problem. I don't have a problem with that because they're a family to take. I just don't know the other spots of it. The only concern, like I said, is we're improving all this and we're not ready for it. And all of a sudden they're going to come up and ask for building units and they're going to give, and they should.
I smell some devils. Someone for the other meeting. Look like Devon, but um, do we have any other members, Devon and Andrew?
Hey, did you get a hold of her?
What?
She's not going to be here today.
Hayden's not going to be here tonight.
Yeah, she's, they're taking her in tomorrow.
Oh yeah, yeah, they're taking her in. I don't know. Did they get the packet? Did you email them the packet?
No. Where's Steve?
Yeah, where's Steve?
They don't make any mention of that, not coming in. He usually does. Cause he hasn't been here for us.
Last couple.
Yeah.
Have you got his number?
Uh, no.
I got Steve's number.
Okay, let's give him a call.
We're still waiting on one more member to start the meeting.
Can we get a hold of Andrew?
What?
Would you?
Can you text Andrew and see if he's, he needs, yes. I was just bringing his number up, but yeah.
Is it Devon living in the crash?
Yeah, I'm texting him.
You're texting him?
Mm-hmm.
So I could, but I can do his phone number.
Yeah, I got it.
Steve just says, he mentioned to you that he won't be here.
Okay.
So he's, he says, is there a problem? I says, there's only three of us, so let's see what he says.
Someone can be on the phone.
Devon said he's just a few minutes out.
He just had surgery on his shoulder.
You what?
Surgery on his shoulder. He cut that a while.
A while ago, yeah.
Heard sometimes that has to happen if you're not, cause you have to really hold still.
I know this Kurt Stinkman had his done, the physical therapist, read the instructions wrong for what surgery he had and did the wrong physical therapies he had habitually done. But yeah, it's been a while. It's probably six weeks.
You can sit over here.
What?
Go in. We're ready. Okay. Thank you for your patience. I'd like to call this meeting to order and I've asked Member Little to give the prayer and then if you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My dear kind heavenly father, we thank thee for this opportunity to serve in thy community and be a part of this community. Thank thee father for this wonderful community and may we continue to build it in a manageable way and may it serve and help all who are, who preside here. Thank thee father for watching over us and please bless us. Amen thy son Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we start our meeting, the county has asked me to pass on the word to report any flooding or any volunteer hours that you have done in mitigating the flooding on their webpage. On the homepage, there's a link there that you can report any flooding and they would really appreciate your volunteer hours. Thank you. So you looked at the agenda. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda's approved. Any declarations of conflict of interest with any of the items on the agenda by the commission? Okay, seeing none. We're moving on to public comment. On our agenda tonight, there are just two administrative items, so these do not have public hearings. So if you wish to make any comment regarding Wasatch Peaks, Phase Three Preliminary Platte, or Peak Mountain Green Town Homes Concept Plan, now would be the time for you to come up and address the commission. Final call. There's no public comment. We'll move on to our agenda items. Number six.
Oh, we do have these two. Do they need to be?
Yeah, I think Jeremy's gonna.
Okay, sorry.
You'll be reading those letters in the, okay, yeah. Yeah, we have two letters here that Jeremy will read in at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Does it boost my volume here? So yeah, I've lost my voice tonight, so I need to do it this way, so. All right, Madam Chair and members of the commission, item number six on tonight's agenda is for application number twenty-two point zero six eight. This is for Wasatch Peaks LLC requesting approval for WPR Phase Three A Preliminary Platte, a proposed subdivision of twenty-six lots. This is the exact same item that you heard in commission maybe about a month ago. We've re-noticed it with correct township and range numbers. Other than that, the item is the same and the plots are the same. There are no fire comments. Engineer comments have been addressed actually today. Perhaps the applicant can speak to that if he wishes. I'll read those letters now. One is from Trevor Kobe entitled Concerns Regarding the WPR Phase Three A Preliminary Platte. I am a member of the Bowman family who owns property surrounded by the Wasatch Peaks Resorts, WPR. The Bowman Homestead property is on, is the quarter section to the left of the base lodge in the picture below on your desks. I will be attending my daughter's graduation at B R U this evening. I would be in attendance at your planning commission tonight, commission meeting tonight. We have three concerns with the proposed WPR Phase Three A Preliminary Platte. Phase Three A does not maintain and provide appropriate emergency access easements to the Bowman Homestead property. WPR management has indicated that they intend to completely fence off the Bowman Homestead property. If a fire cuts across our primary access road to the town of Peterson and we are entirely forced in, then the fire department will not be able to reach our property and anyone on our property, including emergency personnel, would be trapped and at serious risk of injury or death. We currently have easements to the west and south of the Bowman Homestead property that are used to access the forest land to the west and south of our property. These easements should be developed as emergency access points and connected to WPR roads or emergency access lanes. Morgan County Code states, "The subdivider may be required to dedicate grant easements over or otherwise reserve land for parks, playground, public utilities, utility easements, and other public purposes, where there is an essential link between such dedications, the government interest to be served and the impact of the development on the community." Morgan County Code, Section eight dash twelve dash five dash C. "The establishment of a new private street, private lane, or right-of-way shall be evaluated by the zoning administrator and county engineer and may, at the discretion of the county council, be required to be dedicated as a public street, meeting county street standards to accomplish needed and logical street connections, to provide access to properties that may otherwise have no access or limited access to the detriment of the property or other purposes determined to be appropriate." Morgan County Code eight dash twelve dash forty-four dash O. "We request that Morgan County require that Phase Three A maintain and include as emergency access easements, the current easements to the west and south of the Bowman Homestead property. These easements are necessary to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of the, of individuals, including emergency personnel who may be present on the Bowman Homestead property during an emergency. These easements are also necessary to the Morgan County Fire Department, may access the reservoir that sits on the Bowman Homestead property to be used in a case of fire on the Bowman Homestead property or WPR property." Two, Phase Three A does not recognize the easements to the west and south of the Bowman Homestead property that are used to access the Forest Service land to the west and south of our property. We request that Morgan County require that Phase Three A include the current easements that are used to access Forest Service land from the Bowman Homestead property. Third, Phase Three A does not provide for appropriate utility easements as directed by Morgan County Code. Morgan County Code states the following, "Additional easements or increased width of easements may be required as necessary to provide for adequate utility easement and/or drainage within the subdivision and adjoining parcels." Morgan County Code eight dash twelve dash forty-six dash G. The Bowman Homestead is an adjoining parcel and Morgan County Code states that additional easements may be required to provide for adequate utility service to adjoining parcels. The power company is a public utility and without requiring additional easements that the Bowman property can use to connect to the power grid installed on WPR property, Morgan County is essentially locking out the ability for the Bowman family to secure electrical power from a public utility. The same would apply for any public utilities being provided to WPR. Morgan County Code specifically gives the county commission the ability to acquire additional easements to provide utilities to adjoining parcels. We request that Morgan County require that Phase Three A incorporate appropriate utility easements that will allow for connection to public utilities on the Bowman Homestead parcel. Signed Trevor Kobe. Regarding this, recent engineer comments came up about secondary access and again, the applicant is welcome to speak to that, but those comments have been addressed and are ready for, to go to county commission with your approval. Staff is recommending approval for this project. I can't answer any questions that you may have and again, the applicant is in the audience tonight. Thank you.
Any questions for staff right now?
Listen to the applicant.
You got?
I have a couple.
We're good, Jeremy. So the applicant would like to come forward. There's some questions some members have.
Sure. Hi, Brian Estroff with WPR. Thank you for having me here this evening. Jeremy, thank you for that presentation. That was great with the laryngitis and all. We've been working with the Bowman family for quite some time and we've made substantial improvements to their access. We've graded it out to where it's not quite as steep. It doesn't erode. It's a little wider. So we think we've been pretty neighborly with that. This phase also is set back from what he's claiming to be his property line, so we're actually not affecting those access points that he's talking about. So I believe we've addressed that very well. We continue to work with him and have asked him to put everything in writing, cause when we do meet with him, there are things discussed, but we really don't have anything in writing yet at this point, so, but we will continue to work with them.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Just where are we at up there with all this? Cause we keep having all these different phases come in, but what's the infrastructure like or?
Sure, it's going very well. We're working on Phase Two A at the moment and Phase One. Phase One will be completed this summer and then Phase Two will continue this summer and then finish next summer. Phase Three, we'd like to start towards the end of this summer and then continue next summer with it. So we're doing pretty good.
So we started any building up there?
Yeah, we've, we're getting ready to start the village, which is kind of the main area where we have amenity buildings and some residential, higher density residential.
So I guess my question, I don't know, that's what I'm just asking, is the infrastructure in enough to accommodate all this? We keep approving all these phases. Are we where we're supposed to be? I mean, I understand the development agreement.
Yeah.
I just wonder, you know, are we?
Sure.
Set up to take care of what you're doing in case there's problems?
It's a great question. At the moment, we only have two homes under construction. They won't be done this year and they'll probably be done at the, in the next year. But at the moment, we have, we have water upside and this summer, we're going to have sewer functioning well ahead of any occupancies, more than a year ahead. So.
Can I add something as well? So their development agreement states up to seven hundred and fifty lots for single-family homes. Last I saw the number, it was only going to go as high as four hundred and fifty of that, so somewhere around there.
But that's not what the concern is to me, cause that's part of the development agreement. And now what, what I'm worried about more is, are we set up to take care of building and start having people up there? For one, I mean, we're giving building permits out. In my mind, you have to have a permit to get a building permit from Weaver Morgan with your, your septic, you know? So are we set up for all this to be able to house the, what's going on? You know, we get these phases, the development agreement's done. That's, we're not going to change that.
Yeah. So Shane Gary Dirk, I'm the CEO of WPR. First I would say, why don't you come on up, cause we've had a lot of the other folks, staff is up there. Mark Miller, the county engineer, comes up virtually weekly. So we have a meeting every Thursday. He was up today. He tours every single aspect of infrastructure. So everything from the tanks and the pump stations, all the way through the distribution lines. So he's making sure that all the infrastructure is in place that's committed to by each of these plats as we bring them to you. But I think the best thing would be to do is have you come up, cause I think you'll be, be pretty excited about how much we've gotten done.
Yeah.
So, but it's being inspected literally on a weekly basis by the county engineer.
That's, that's more my concern, just to make sure that we're functioning in the right way, that we're not letting things slip through, you know, that we're not where we're supposed to be.
With that same weekly meeting, either Jeremy or Josh are always there, so we go through everything related to the, you know, what's obligated by the entitlements. So both of them are keeping our feet to the fire. You know, as you know, it's tough right now. Debbie certainly knows, she's right next door to us, that we got a lot of snow and it's all coming down the mountain. And so we're, we're a bit fighting the mud that everybody else is seeing all throughout the county. But, but other than that, all the infrastructure is in place and it's being inspected weekly by the county engineer. So I would love to have you come up there, cause I think once you could see it, and anybody else on the planning commission happy to take you up there. If you give us a couple of weeks, it might be a little drier, but if you have your mud boots, we'll take you tomorrow.
Okay. Well, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, bet. Thank you.
Is that it? Any other questions?
Just on the one on the, just with the, with the letter, maybe could you just walk me through and help me? I mean, there's always two sides to everything and so help me just, do you have a copy of the letter over there by chance?
From?
From the Bowman family. Or from Trevor Kobe?
Yes. Yeah, sure.
Could you just help me understand just kind of, or you know, how those are being addressed or are they being addressed or concerned?
Yeah, sure. The access has been addressed in our mind. We've, they, we've improved their access points. I think Trevor's going a step beyond in what he's asking for, but we've improved his access much better than it has been for, as long as they've probably owned the property.
I'm sorry, just to, just to follow up on that. So I think in the letter, they talk about how a fence would be erected all the way around their property. Is that?
It's a cattle fence, yeah. Cause we're obligated in the DA to do that in our open space management plan. So we, we have a cattle fence that's going up. That's correct.
And then is there gates? I mean, I assume that, are there gates that go in there? Apologize, I'm just coming up to speed so you help me understand.
So we had a pretty good meeting with Trevor, Mark Miller, Josh Cook, Jeremy Cunningham, Jeremiah Cunningham, our engineer, and we went through that. We, we agreed that we could put emergency gates up with a fire department lockbox to address that. So I think that's been addressed.
Okay. And then just the other couple of points is with the easements. Are those being recognized, not recognized, or kind of?
His property line. So at the moment, the property line in discrepancy, we've, we are actually set back from that property line and Josh told him that. And so it's been addressed. Josh was very direct with him in that this does not affect his property line because of that setback. So I think we've honored what we need to and Josh and Mark were very clear.
I, I think Trevor was referring to easements that they have been using in the past to, I think the west and the south to access Forest Service and if you were going to be honoring those. Have you had discussions regarding those?
Not sure if Ed has. I'm sorry, I haven't been involved with all those meetings, so.
Let's go to the map and maybe I can clarify. Great. So here's the Bowman parcel. Okay, this insignia is actually the golf course that's under construction. So one of the reasons for the cattle fencing is obviously to make sure the cows don't have a new smorgasbord buffet as soon as we get ready to grass the golf course. Their exist, so to give everybody's point of reference, the golf course is here, the village for WPR is here, Morgan Valley Drive is over here, guys, okay? And so their access easement historically comes this way. All their easements are here. They don't have any formal easements this way, if that was the question. So all of their access, any of their future utilities will be brought up their existing access road, which is all on this side. This is the project that you're reviewing, that you reviewed prior and that you're reviewing tonight and blew out. So that's where the access is. And the purpose of the cattle fencing obviously is, we have a kind of a perimeter road that comes along here and that'll have a kind of a cattle fence just so the cows.
So straight down to Siri for that south and then that way west?
Yep. North is up, yep. South this way, east this way.
So what, what they're saying to me then is he wants access through their property to the?
Forest Service.
The Forest Service.
He's just saying that he historically, I think he's probably claiming a prescriptive right and that's, that's going to be a civil matter. That doesn't pertain to us.
He does not have any formal public easements, you know? So if he's claiming a prescriptive right, we obviously don't agree with that, but his current access, I think you know Debbie's over this.
Yeah, the road that goes up.
And you know, it's steep and it has ditches and it's kind of tough. So what we're trying to do, at least through our property, is improve that. So that'll be fully preserved and fenced around that forum so he has what he needs.
And I think he was asking for maybe emergency access in case that one gets cut off by something and there is a fire or emergency personnel needs to get there, whether an ambulance or something, that there's another way to get into their parcel.
Yeah, we don't really have any, you know, public roads that come anywhere near the perimeter of their property. So I'm not sure what you're trying to do there, but.
Not with this?
This road's here. That's the road.
And there's, okay, there's no steps going toward them?
No, and it's really steep. This is a flat map, so you'd have to.
Right, right.
This is, this is a really steep mountain and it stays steep. So we met with Trevor five, six times, tried to show him, you know, he, there's times when he represents the easements exist that don't exist. And Jeremy, I think you testified, there's no, there's no dedicated easement historically off any of the other sides. Even this is not a formally dedicated easement. We're just honoring that because obviously he needs a way to get into the property and bring utilities if he wants to into his property.
No.
Yeah, that's probably been since the eighteen sixties, so I.
Yeah, yeah. And we, you know, we can improve the park through our property. I think ultimately he's going to have to approve it further down too. It's, it's pretty, it's a pretty tough way.
Debbie, I think we may have taken you down there after we kind of improved it on our section.
No, I haven't.
Oh, you haven't?
I haven't seen that access, no.
It's much better. It's.
So happy to take you guys out, show it to you, but that's his access is on this side. This application is on the west side. Yep.
And then the last question was just on point three and they just talked about the utility easement. Any, anything being done to address that or is that?
Yeah, well, you know, I think all our discussions with Trevor have been, if he wants to bring utilities up his access road, he's welcome to. We have formed a kind of a private sewer water road district and basically all the people, and that was really at the county's request, so that the taxpayers don't have to fund any of the roads or utilities within our community. So, but he's, you know, he has that other easement if he'd like to, you know, bring utilities in that way. utilities in that way. And when you guys come up, we can take you down there and show you that, or we're showing you all the other district.
Got it. Oh, Jeremy, it tours, so if you guys would like to tag along, please do. I'd be more than happy to take you, take you out.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Any discussion? For sales? Are there any other conditions you'd like to add, other than what staff has requested?
Let me look at them again.
The conditions are, all outsourced consultant fees are paid current prior to final plat application, and that all other local, state, and federal laws are adhered to. If you'd like any conditions, maybe to address any concerns that were brought up tonight, or if you're, if you're fine.
I don't see anything that we can add, really.
Select that, okay.
What are you thinking?
No, just if there's any recommendations you want to make to the county commission that they address, or that they consider.
I really can't, can't think of anything.
I mean, Josh and Emma would have to be watching, make sure that applies with the development agreement, right?
Right, Josh, they do, yep.
I'm sorry, that's the only thing I know, and that's just goes with what they have, so I don't, I mean, I feel with the Bowman's, but.
A lot of it is a civil matter that they need to work out.
That, that's something that I'd, I don't know what you do there.
Okay, so, no more discussion, I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion. I move that we recommend approval to the county commission for the Wasatch Peak subdivision, Phase 3A preliminary plat, application 22.068, allowing for a 26-lot subdivision of land located approximately 4195 north, 3800 west, in unincorporated Morgan County, based on the findings and the conditions listed in the staff report dated April 27, 2023.
I have a motion by member Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by member Little?
Miller.
Miller? I know I was gonna do that.
Close enough.
I'll call you Warner before the night's over. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Do you have to vote?
No, I, no, we just have a recording, so three's fine.
As long as you got three, we're good.
Voting was unanimous.
So you don't have to vote if it was.
Had enough needed for.
Yes, to make or break the tie, you know?
Yeah.
Next item is Peak Mountain Green Town Homes Concept Plan.
Item number seven on tonight's agenda is for application number 23.010. So this is an approved, or this is for, a request for approval of a proposed concept plan for a subdivision for the construction of 69 townhomes identified by the parcel numbers and serial numbers contained in your staff report, and is located approximately 450 feet west of the Old Highway Road and Trappers Loop intersection in Mountain Green. If you, for those of you that were here last year, this, this is in response to the rezone, the Osler rezone is for this property. Pardon me while I check my notes. There have been questions about access for this property, and that's what a lot of the fire comments concern. But the applicant will need approval from UDOT for access from Old Highway, West Old Highway Road specifically. Staff has reviewed this project and finds that it meets all minimum code requirements. And so there are no engineer comments, but the fire comments that were submitted largely, largely are applicable to the site plan review section of, of a subdivision. And so, again, this concept plan tonight meets all minimum code requirements. The staff is recommending approval. I can answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is in the audience tonight. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
I guess I was confused. I thought we were developing this as a town center zone earlier, but I guess it wasn't.
It, it was rezoned to RM15.
RM15, but not town center?
Not town center.
Okay.
There's no commercial in this concept, and it's just 69 townhomes.
I don't remember the rezone on that.
Yeah.
The Osler rezone was like November last year.
I have a hard time remembering, two weeks ago.
Um, the property was sold to the applicant, maybe May of last year, something like that?
See?
There's the, the lot was sold to you in May.
Oh, no, no, we closed on the property after the rezone, January.
Okay.
I'm happy to give you the due real quick.
So what's the zone for now?
RM15, 15 units.
For?
Acre.
What was our, what was our logic in doing that? Do you remember? I'm just trying to remember the whole thing if I can.
Well, it's part of the, the town center area, multifamily is inappropriate use within the town center. The town center doesn't have to have the town center zone, but.
How far's your town center go through there? I can't remember now.
I can pull it up if I want to.
You pull it up.
I'll give you a quick, well, easy on that, I can give you the really quick story behind it. So there's 5.9 acres there. At the time, we, there was two different township center options, right? The township center and the township with commercial application in it, which back in the rezone, we identified that the township commercial application, which required 35% of the usable buildings or acreage to be commercial, was not the most applicable for the property. And so the approval of the RM15 zone was allowed within that, yeah, yeah. So it's, this is the square here. So that's what the zoning definite, or history was. Now, obviously, we don't want to put, nor could we put 88 townhomes in there. In fact, we lessen that significantly to open space and allowable for good square footage and good usability of the property itself. And so right now, we're settling in that 69 to 70 unit zone, partially because of fire marshal requirements that we're trying to accommodate, and I'm happy to answer the questions in response to them as well. So that's the short, quick history. I, once the zoning was done, we closed the property, subject to a couple of other conditions, January 7th, January 10th of this year?
And so you are working with UDOT to get approval?
Yeah.
Because it usually takes a while.
So actually, UDOT's, it's done, but there's some conditions outside of our property. So do you have the concept? Sure, can pull that forward. So as part of our concept, and to continually move things forward, we've got our will serve letter from our sewer, we've got our water committed through Highlands. We actually have agreed to be, or to be determined exactly, to help them increase their infrastructure off-site. So we're actually gonna help them build up their system to, for future development in the area. So we've agreed and committed to that. This concept here, so we have the church with their two accesses, okay, which was approved by UDOT. These two accesses, and then we also have another access here, and then obviously, this Sinclair. So Reeves and Associates, my engineer, they actually are developing and designing a concept for the other side of the road, which I'm not sure it's come to council yet. We're planning on zoning. But however, UDOT actually has approved these two access points in conjunction with what's the potential future use is across the street, okay? The other element to the UDOT is that, given when Trappers does go all the way through to 84, the condition of, is this road gonna go stay a UDOT road, or is it going to go into a county road, which again, there's a lot of to be determined on that. So our access is, is solid, but not 100%. I will say that, we're 95%. And Reeves and Associates has gone through that. Again, we talk water, power, obviously, through Dominion and then Rocky Mountain Power, they, they don't like to see anything right now until after a fully approved subdivision. Mind you, this concept is gonna change, and there's a couple of reasons why. One is, is we do have a, a, a concept design, again, unit count's gonna be between 60 and 70. We have no need or desire to go any larger. But I'll be honest with you, this one's a little bit too blocky and square for me, so we're actually looking at doing another side street through here, okay? So then, as Nielsen has some of their townhomes fronted along Morgan Valley Drive for this buffer, and then it would create more open space on the interior side of this thing. The fire marshal's comments is, they've talked about having us do a secondary access for two reasons. We'll start with the one first, but the width of these double accesses, the fire marshal wants them wider, okay? Well, obviously, there's many examples, including where they have a single access, and there's a lot of secondary emergency access and/or accessibility for the fire marshal, so, but we can't move these, right? Given what UDOT's allowing us to do. So in conjunction, we have two different options. We're entertaining an option over here with Dee as a potential of going through his property. He's interested in, in selling the property to us, but it's not a have-to. The second issue with the fire marshal is he's like, hey, we'll agree that this, these accesses are fine. We don't care, but you might have to put fire sprinklers in there. So again, not part of concept, but I wanted to make sure you guys knew moving forward, had in your brain that we are working in conjunction, that worst-case scenario, we have to put sprinklers in all the townhomes, given the fire marshal's code requirement, and/or provide a third access, which, again, is a little bit down the priority line, given the set, given the option of being able to do sprinklers within the units themselves. Size and square footage, in fact, I just received an email from my architect on design. We're gonna be very similar square footage-wise to the Rome project. We've got 1,500 square feet, three bedroom, two bath, two car garage units, all the way up to 20 100 square foot units with a four-bedroom, two and a half-bath, two-car, every one of them's gonna have a two-car garage. We've chosen, based upon the concept and the layout, not to do common pools, not to do common pickleballs. We've got Kent Smith Park over there, which is close, and everybody wants to go over there instead of have it on-site. But yeah, let's kind of end it in a nutshell. We've already done the geotech, we've done geotech studies all the way up here. Again, these buildings are shifting a little bit different, but as far as concept-wise, the unit count is what I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of, that we're not going the max density of, you know, roughly 90 units. We're gonna keep that down and make sure it's, it's a little bit less, if that makes any sense. Fire optics, yes, we're, it's a good project.
Sweet, no more answers.
I just have on your, you've got arrows, your engineer has arrows on the street running into each other, he probably.
Oh, yeah, yeah, concept likes that, just so you know.
Well, no, he's got arrows.
These here? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why it's concept, Ben, because it changes. This is the concept, this is the idea. When we come into prelim, it'll, it'll come in.
Yeah, the traffic flow could be a problem, because it's gonna have some head-ons, but okay.
Yeah, yeah, well, again, we've, we've moved, we've moved forward, given a lot of different, you know, reasons from a development standpoint of wanting to get more of the water and sewer and access parts finished up, or at least down, almost finished. Again, access is really the only final document that, that we're waiting for that approval, but we've, until they finalize what's going on across the street, that will come with our preliminary application. And as, with that, we'll also have full architectural design plans at prelim, because our footprints are gonna stay the same. We're roughly about 25 feet by 50 feet-ish, in terms of box square footage to play with. So every one of these units, but. What am I missing, guys? Anything else?
Is there no way those arrows should be traffic flow?
No, no, I don't know why engineers do that. Probably to charge me more and go, can you change those arrows? Sure.
I think that doesn't really seem to do it.
No, but I thought was, yeah, strange.
Again, you'll see, when you see our other concept, again, you, most of my concept experience is, how many units are you gonna put in? Right? We're gonna be 69 to 70 units, period. We're not gonna come in and ask for more, but we need to have it at that count to be able to make it economically feasible. You know, the off-site that you, or that, remind me what, I just lost it. Highlands is requesting, if not requiring, is, is very significant. So with that being said, we've gotta be able to offset new development agreements down the road. So there's, there's still some moving parts there, but our 70-unit count, they have committed through a letter of, a will serve, a will serve letter, that allows us that they have the water services, and we're, they're committed that way.
Any more questions for the applicant or staff?
Thanks, guys, we appreciate it.
Any discussion among ourselves, or is someone ready for a motion?
When do we, do we need to read?
Oh, do you want to read Dwayne, Dwayne Johnson's? His doesn't really pertain to concept, but.
His is gonna come more into preliminary.
Every preliminary, but yeah, we can.
Morgan County Planning Commission, what are you going to do with the storm drain water? In front of the church on the east and on Old Highway Road, there are six inches of water or more standing whenever it storms. We will tolerate no more water drained on our property. Where are the oil separators in these new subdivisions that you are dumping into Cottonwood Creek? You need to be installing oil separators. Do you have permission from the state of Utah to access Old Highway Road? There is only a six-inch water line there, and it will not produce fire flow. How will you address that? Sincerely, Dwayne D. Johnson.
Just to give you a heads up on that, so we have, he actually brought that up, although I've not heard that one, but currently, right now, we understand the storm drain issue on this side, and so we are looking to do an onsite retention, storm drain collection management systems within the site. Reeves and Associates also did the design of the storm drain for the church, so he's very, very much aware of the storm drain. And what was the other one? It was.
They got fire flow.
Oh, the six-inch water line, that's part of our expansion agreement with Highlands. So we're addressing those.
And oil separators?
Oil separators. I, I'm doing all separators in Men and Shortfield Landings, so I understand what they are, but that's the first that I've heard of. We don't anticipate, I guess, is he talking about where he's gonna put an oil separator?
What exactly mean by oil separators?
Well, typically, it's contaminants that come from your particular site that goes into any type of a common water drainage area. And so what they have is, in my, my other commercial project over by the airport, we have to do an oil separator filtration system, just in case one of the commercial users actually dumps something into the, into the septic. So it's more of a septic issue than it is a storm drain issue, is, is what I've experienced over at Shortfield Landings.
I've never, I've never heard of something like that for, so I was curious what he.
But I'm sure, you know, we'll address it as we move forward.
Well, it'd be one of those things where Mark Miller and them would have it address it, so.
Larry, just, I guess I had one more question on that corner, right there below the cemetery where it's really steep. Are you doing some excavating there? And what's the geotech saying?
Geotech said, I mean, as far as the soils have settled right here, the geotech reports are coming back solid, like it's good soils. However, we will do, any type of retention will do, will be an engineered block wall, similar to what I did over in Peterson, if you remember that. Same as what Wasatch Peaks is doing, it's not rock. you remember that, same as what Wasatch Peaks is doing, it's not rock, not a big fan of rock, cooler time, but any of this, again, this is going to change to where some of these townhomes are going to shift, when you see, come into prelim, how that's going to look, but any of the retention requirement is going to be an engineered block. Yeah, I mean, you've driven over here, you've seen the cemetery's soil slip and slide.
Yeah.
In fact, the church is trying to sell me the cemetery right now. You guys want to buy a plot? Don't cheat. We'll see, we'll see. Anyway, that's, that's the solution.
Okay, thanks.
No other questions? Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move for a recommendation of the Peak Mountain Green Town Homes Concept Plan to the county commission, application number 23.010, allowing for 69 unit commercial subdivision of land located east of the Mountain Green West Chapel on West Old Highway Road in Mountain Green, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report, dated April 27, 2022.
Okay, I have a motion by member Stevens, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by member Little. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Business staff questions? My only request is we probably need everyone's phone numbers, so we can get.
Yeah, that'd be good, send out an email.
Send an email with everyone's phone numbers, so we can put them in our phones. And for those, you need to let staff know if you're not going to be at a meeting, and probably text me, so that we can make sure we do have a form.
We have to have four.
Four.
Where we can't have a, so we were.
So, if I didn't show up, it would have been a problem?
It would have been a problem.
Yes.
There could be, on, you can, over the phone, make a form, so if you're, if we get desperate and you're unable to, you can do a call-in to make the form.
Yeah, we're, give you a heads notice, I did it once when I was out of town.
Yeah. It's, it's not the easiest way to attend a meeting, but it, it can be done.
They kind of forget you're there.
Yeah.
Zoom is probably a little better, can I, picture and grace, you get audio for the video.
So, okay. Okay, so, approval of the minutes, I, I think changes were called in.
I didn't, but I, I have just one little bit, all the things that I mentioned weren't put in here that, that everybody from Milton called and told me about, I don't know if we could get that added in, how to go about it. The only reason I say that, and I could be wrong with it, but I think on a legislation decision and everything, that these people have a right to have it recorded what's said, and, how do I want to say it? To me, there's no sense having a public hearing if we're not going to listen to them.
That makes sense to me, yeah.
So, you want?
I capture all public meetings and their commenting, so I should have gathered that information.
Yeah, so I think if we could add, I don't know.
But Shane, remember he had some bullet points he mentioned?
Yeah.
If you could maybe add those to the minutes?
I, I think they need to be added, and they need to make sure, and they go to the county commission when that item's presented there, because that's what, that's what my people from Milton were saying, I mean, I know that's not everybody, but the majority has spoke that way.
It'll be on Tuesday, it'll be on the agenda this Tuesday, the county commission.
But that's what I mean, is the county commission, I hope that they have those bullet points in their packet for them, so if it didn't get here, then I get nervous that the county commission.
Their packet might have gone out already, but maybe.
But not the minutes, yeah, I have it set in the minutes, yeah, it's still getting approved, so I will go in and.
Add Shane's comments, I think he might have been.
That's, that's the only thing I noticed, if we could do that, so thank you.
As far as the staff report for the county commission, I really didn't kind of, at least parent say, I didn't get the exact bullet points, but I looked at the discussion.
Well, and see.
The applicant, the public, and the commission, so.
Yeah, I just, for me, a lot of what I read with the minutes was what staff was saying and everything, nothing was really saying what the residents of Milton were saying in what I read, so. So, I mean, like the road, and, and basically, you could write in there that the people in Milton don't want it, I mean, that was the bottom line.
One other very small correction, this on the declaration of conflict, it says, member Phillips, should be Miller?
We, we got it.
I do guys mixed up, so.
No, you're good.
Little, Miller, Phillips, whatever.
It's going to take us a while to get these names to roll off our tongue.
It's been a while since we've had much change.
Yeah.
Happens every so often, I guess. That's all I have, so I'm good.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by member Stevens, I have a second.
Second.
Second by member Miller. All in favor?
Aye, so moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting's adjourned.